First item on tonight's work session is discussion of K-1 Center Master Plan requested to be on the agenda by Councilman Conyers.
Right, so basically, I'm trying to pull up my...basically on the K-1 Center, I just wanted to have a conversation as a group about what we see for the format for having some town halls. I know the mayor's already lined up one opportunity. That is April the 3rd, is that correct? From 9:00 to 12:00?
Ten, it says it starts at 10:00.
Yeah, we changed it to 9:00 to 12:00.
Oh, it is?
But basically, this is, she's with, Amy Chester is with Rebuild by Design and she's part of kind of the, what I introduced that we're doing for all of the Restore projects. And they do community engagement in a very creative way so that everybody has input. And anyway, she's going to be down here for the Resiliency Conference the same time because she'll be on the panel. So she's doing it while she's down here.
Are we paying her to be here?
Very little, yes. Mostly just to cover her expenses getting down here.
So she's under $2,500?
Well, it's not professional services, contracted professional services.
Is it? What's it a contract for?
I said that there is no contract.
Okay.
So. And then the other thing that we would like to look into also is just to have it to save is an illustrator that puts all the ideas kind of as illustration. And this would be one in a series of activities to get community engagement. And this has come from a lot of citizens imploring us to do something in a roundtable type environment so that everybody feels like they are comfortable to put their input in.
And that's my thought is just that I've been approached by numerous citizens with lots of different opinions, lots of great ideas. And I just wanted to bring to the group, what do we want to come up with with the format for hearing these ideas, vetting them, and then ultimately deciding what direction to go? You know, it can't be everything. But it also doesn't need to be limited to just one particular use. So I know we've already had some ideas, you know, Hatch, you know, that grant fell through, as we discussed in DC, there possibly is an opportunity-
It's a possibility, still an opportunity though.
For some more opportunities for the redevelopment side of it or the renovation side of it. So we've got a lot of different directions we could go. And I just wanted to hear from everybody here, what y'all see. I mean, do we hold a couple of town hall type forums in addition to this meeting?
We're doing this-
We also have to schedule the times, you know, there's a lot of people that can't be there from 9:00 to 12:00.
Right, we're doing this around her schedule right now.
Right, well, you gotta get watches here.
Including a survey. But this is, you know, someone who, she's, she works for Hank Ovink, like I told you. And then he's the, you know, the world envoy for water in the Netherlands. So this is so far ahead of what we can do. The fact that we're getting her to come down is a real coup. And they, what they have done since Hurricane Sandy and the way that they put together these community engaged ideas, there's not, this is not going to have a lot of detail right now. These are about, you know, bird's eye view type categories right now. And it's, it's a lot different than even what I thought it would be. So, and this will be how we do the Restore Funds as well. This is how we're going to do the Living Shoreline for the Bay and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, mainly the Comprehensive Land Use Plans, because we're going to do it so that truly everybody has input. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think getting the input is great. I mean, but, you know, it's important for everybody to keep in mind, like Jimmy said, is that it can't be everything. You know, you're going to have 150 ideas of what everybody thinks it should be, but it can't be all those things. And so it's-
Pretty sure she knows that. She's, this is what she does for a living.
Well, I'm not talking about her, I mean, she's, you know, because, I mean, she's going to be here for one time for three hours. I mean, so I talk about the people that are going to be here.
She's just, we wanted to have a, you know, an unbiased person.
You know, I mean, I, you know, my thought, you know, and we, Jimmy and I talked with Cherry Lee about getting a third party in. I didn't think we needed it. I thought we could do it just by a series of town hall meetings to just hear the input of the people and see what they had to say. You know, I'm not opposed to it, I just didn't think we needed it. But, you know, I want there to be an opportunity for everybody to be heard.
I can't think of a better way to do it than, than things like this.
Yeah, well, I mean, and again, I'm not saying we don't, I don't know, I don't know her at all and what her credentials are. I'm just saying-
I encourage you to look it up.
I want there to be multiple opportunities. We're doing this around her, not around the community who are really the voices I want to hear.
We're not going to have one meeting. I mean, this is, she's already down here. And so it is, and I think, from what I hear, a lot of people are going to come. So it's not like this is going to be, even though it's last minute, it's going to be very well attended. And again, it'll be-
I hope it is. And I hope, but I hope we don't just stop there. I mean, I think it's-
I'd said even in the press release that this is one in a, in a series.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's right.
It's going to be very similar to how we do, like I said, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
And I would say another thing I wanted to just bring up as a group, I think it's important that we get it right and that we don't rush into making whatever decision we are going to make. I know people are going to be anxious to see something happen with that property. And where do we stand on the actual acquisition of it? Is that-
Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to Eddie Tyler Friday, ran into him at the Special Olympics. And I, I told him that we're ready to write a check, just get the paperwork in order so that we can sign it. And that he's moving forward with that. We're just waiting on him to get the papers in order and when we can execute the documents. And he made a phone call or two. When he left, he actually called me back just to confirm that that's moving forward. They're, they're well aware that we're just, we're-
We're waiting on them right now.
We're ready to take over whenever they're ready to, for us to sign the papers. I said, let us know the closing date, we'll be there.
And I just, I just think it's key for us to, you know, get the property, number one, and then we, we don't have to have something implemented next month or, you know, we don't have to rush into it. We'll just take our time and make the right decision.
This is, like I said, no, no rush. We're taking advantage of an opportunity for this resilience program.
And I'm not even talking about that meeting on April 3rd. I'm just talking collectively about-
I think that the consensus from a lot of people is that we were moving forward on something that not everybody had input. That's why I've gotten so much feedback from citizens. And that's why we're doing this.
And I think that the council has tried and maybe not done a good job, but tried our best to say that, that we don't want to get the carpet, you know, ahead of the horse. We want to get the purchase. We want to get this under our, our ownership. And then we want to hear input. And I kind of echo what, what Councilman Conyers is saying is that, you know, we don't need to be in a hurry. And I'm not saying anybody is, but we're not in a hurry. We've got a lot of time. We don't even know how we're going to fund the renovations at this point, or anything else that's going to be done there. I know that there are groups of people that have pots of money that are ready to go on certain things. And, and all of those should be discussed, you know, among the public. And I think that it has been, has been mentioned numerous times, STEAM Center, Performing Arts Center, Hatch, like you said, seemed to get some, maybe some new legs while we were in DC. We had both our senators, you know, agree to write separate letters of support for that grant. And so we're going to resubmit that application with letters of support from our senators. So I think that there are some, and that, you know, and that alone, if we use Hatch as a vehicle, we'll have some encumbrances on it. I mean, some. I mean, obviously, if we use Hatch as a vehicle, Hatch will be using the building. So I think that goes without saying. And I haven't ever heard any pushback from anybody on that. So I hope that that's certainly-
That's because you haven't, we haven't really had a community engaged meeting. I mean, I think that the way you, the reason why you do this is to make everybody comfortable to just share ideas. And, you know, the, the attitude that this was already planned and not that many people were a part of it, I found out about it, I think, three days before it happened, those are the things that people don't want to see. It's how we've kind of done things for a long time, but we're not going to do them that way anymore. So there's, like I said, anything, the only good that will come out of this is that everybody feels like they've had input. And that's something that historically, people have not felt that way.
Well, I think, I mean, I think everybody should have input. I mean, it's a big project and it's, it's a, it's going to be, you know, centerpiece of downtown. And I think the difference with the Hatch is if you had a possibility where somebody was going to bring $6 million to the table, then-
That was for the purchase too.
Then that was going to override the-
That, that, we can write any proposal for that money. It's, that money is not reserved just for something like that. It's reserved for anything that has economic impact. So the fact that that was put together with just a few people, when you can put that same amount of money together for that same resource, I definitely think it can be even better. When you're, instead of being inclusive, I mean, we want to be inclusive instead of exclusive. And that's what this process has been. We want to make sure that everybody can add what they want.
Right. Well, I'll just say this about, about that comment is, you know, I mean, anybody else might, could put that together, but nobody else did. Hatch did and brought it to us to say, this is a way that we can purchase this property and pay for it with, you know, a lot of it supplemented and taken care of. And that's kind of how that got even started, you know. I mean, anybody can do a lot of things, but until they do it, it's just kind of up in smoke.
We shouldn't look at that as the end all be all. The funds there, these types of funds are always available. And I'd like to see them, you know, with more community engagement. I don't have an agenda. I just know that people and how they feel about this because they weren't included as part of the process. And we want to correct that.
So aside from this initial April 3rd meeting, how do y'all want to, want to vet these ideas? What kind of formats do y'all want to do? When?
I wasn't in a hurry to set one because I want, like I said, I wanted to get the ownership of it.
Don't even have the property yet.
I think we'll see how it goes.
We're going to get the property.
Right. But we don't have it yet.
We'll see how it goes. And I think that we can find somebody from the city to facilitate one or as many meetings as, as we need.
And just as long as they haven't been like the ones in the past where that's dominated. The roundtable meetings is really the way to go. And I think if you'll come to it, you'll understand why this is going to be so beneficial. This format's very, it's a very positive and will be a real creative way to get people thinking. So.
Comments?
Yeah, in my opinion, like y'all said, need to get the property first. And I like, I like Fief's proposal for the four outbidding buildings in the Pelicans Nest. You know, they're going to do that with their own funds. Fief has been involved in the community for a couple of decades now. And I think they've, they've got a great approach to the small parcel of the land. And if they're going to do it with their own money, I would say we purchase it in, in my opinion, let them move forward with their STEAM or whatever they want to call it project on that north side of the property and, you know, clean up the property where it doesn't look like it's a dilapidated building. And I think, secondly, we need to get a, once we do get a purchase, is get a structural analysis of the building. Otherwise, you know, we're going to start having these roundtables, what to do with the building before we know if the building's salvageable. So.
We're not putting any cart before the horse. Sharing ideas can be done between now and when we start.
And I want a salvageable building. Hopefully, it can be.
I believe in, and it may have been, and it may be out of date now, but I believe there was a survey done on that within the say, last, I'm going to throw a number out, you know, last five, eight years. And I believe that exists.
Okay.
And we might be able to track that down.
A survey on what?
On the building.
I don't know how well that survey was done, but my, my point is, we need to purchase it. Now simultaneously, we could have a roundtable discussion, see what they want to do with it. But the main thing after that is to find out how sound the building actually is and do a complete structural analysis of the building so that we do know what we can and cannot do with it and what the repairs are going to be in order to put it back to a sound effect. That would be the second thing to do. Then the, the second third, which would be finding out what, you know, because I have no agenda. It doesn't matter to me. As long as the people are happy with what they want to do, that's fine by me.
I just think it needs to be the citizens' agenda.
But I do, I do feel we need to find out what kind of shape that building's in before we start deciding, we need to do this, 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 or this.
That's definitely a step that we need to take.
And I see the second step.
There is, there is some survey done. And I just, it may be out of date, but it's, we can dust it off and at least look at it, see where we stand. Any other comments? Councilman Robinson or Councilman Conyers?
No, I just wanted to bring it up, have everybody kick some ideas around and talk about the, the vision for the process.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think that this first set of roundtables will be the last set of roundtables.
No, no, no.
It won't be.
That's exactly what we said when we put the press release out.
Thank you all. Okay, Councilman Brown, you want to discuss the conservation easement on the Triangle property?
Yeah, I guess the-
Or lack thereof?
Yeah. So there's not a conservation easement currently?
Correct.
Correct. I know it's been discussed in the past. You know, I made that proposal for the, the bike trails on the northern parcel. So when we say Triangle, I'm primarily speaking about the northern parcel that borders Fly Creek.
Just want to correct you on one thing. We made a, we made a resolution for a bike trail study.
True. So, just want to get y'all's, y'all's input about putting that parcel in a conservation easement to protect it. That was, that was also a recommendation in that Thompson Engineering Study that was done in 2016.
Yeah. And we've got, we've already, we had a donation.
We've had a $35,000 donation.
And I think, you know, just, I'll just start off. I think we should. I think we should, I think, I think we should have already done it. And I think we've had a, we had a talk, we had a presentation by staff and some ideas on that. And we just need to decide, you know, broadly, and maybe we need to have a public meeting on that as well. But what we want to allow and disallow. The other thing is that we're going to get 5,000 different uses for that 108 acres. And we have to just narrow it down. I mean, we talked about bike trails on the, on the northern part of it, but I don't think it was, certainly wasn't limited to bike trails. And I've heard walking trails and areas for having picnics. And then I've heard arboreums and conservatories and other things on the, on the actual triangle itself. We've talked about a tunnel. We've talked about some parking and bathrooms there. And, you know, I think that if we, when we put it in a conservation easement, we need to be certain that we, because that's limiting, that we, that we keep it broad enough to have a little elasticity in there, but, but been narrow enough so that it doesn't become overdeveloped. So.
Is anybody in objection to putting both parcels in a conservation easement? If, as long as we've thought out potential future uses and done, like you said-
I'm totally in agreement with that.
I was too.
So you can incorporate walking trails.
You can do a lot of things. You just have to designate what you're willing to allow.
Basically incorporate anything that deals with park in one of these. But it protects the property perpetuity, not to be what I call ruined along that borderline.
What I explained to you and Councilman Conyers when we talked about this a while back, you know, we have a Comprehensive Land Use Plan forthcoming. And we're going to be bringing in a lot of experts. I mean, I just don't see what the rush is to do this when we're getting ready to do that. And then you don't know better from the experts what that would look like. I think that conservation would mostly be for the creek. But easements are forever. And you need to, we got to think it through instead of rushing into something.
So when these, when these experts come in, oh, the, one thing, and I've heard you say that, you mean, the lady that's going to hold the roundtable meetings is an expert with some company that specializes in, you know, water quality or something to that effect. And I believe you said that they were based in-
Not all of it is. It's just-
The Netherlands or, or somewhere. And I-
What Rebuild by Design is, is community engagement when you've identified, you know, something that you want to do, or you've identified a problem, or, and then really bringing innovative ways to solve the problem. So they do a lot of things. I absolutely encourage you to, to look at their website so you can get an idea of what they've done. I mean, it was featured on 60 Minutes, maybe six months ago. So it's, it is a big deal. And I think it's, we're very lucky to have them come down.
And, and, but giving back, and that, that's great. But getting, and also getting back to the Triangle property and these experts that are coming from the outside, I think that everybody sitting around this table has a pretty good idea of what, you know, people want. And, you know, there may be, you know, what majority of people want. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been elected. And I think that it can come from within. The ideas can come from within, not from outside.
They're not going to come from the outside. They're going to come from the community. That's the, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is going to involve the community in all areas of fair hope. The professionals that are coming are doing it so it's done in a way that, like I said, everybody will have input. And this is, in the 21st century, this is how things are done now. Town hall meetings are dead. You don't get people's input by having a town hall meeting. And it just, this is going to be a lot better way to really make everybody have the input that they want and nobody feels left out. I mean, you don't have to give your input, but if you want to have an opinion on something or an idea. Right now, a lot of people feel like they don't have that opportunity. And I've been talking to a lot of people. And I know you, y'all talked to some of the same people who have been pleading for this.
Well, yeah, back to the conservation easement, you know, I don't, I'd be fine with putting both of them and, you know, limited restrictions on it. I mean, I hear what you're saying about, you know, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, but at the same time, those two parcels that are, you know, direct watershed to Fly Creek, you know, and I don't think there's any citizen that's going to complain about protecting Fly Creek.
It's, it's not about protecting Fly Creek. There's sugar sand on the Triangle and most of the parcel across the street. There aren't issues right now with rain and as far as development, I think there needs to be something to protect the creek. But this is sugar sand that we're dealing with. So I just think that before you put something in, when we're going out and having all of these community engagement meetings by, by area, including this, this area, why won't we do that first? I mean, it's happening this year.
When do we expect that Land Use Plan to be done?
I mean, that's, Cherry Lee's not here right now, but Richard Johnson, you can't put a date on it because these are federal funds and they've, but I feel like it's going to happen this, this year. Do you have an educated guess, Richard?
We, just on the first bucket, we did finally get a letter of authorization to go. And, but that's the waterfront-
Bucket one.
And, but the anticipation is it's going to be a pretty quick succession of leases. It's going to, it's a hurry up and wait situation. You know, when Treasury says, okay, then we can expend funds and for those, that comprehensive plan. So.
And Mayor, you said that the property is sugar sand. I mean, how, is there a study that-
Yeah, there was a study.
Showed us that?
Yes.
Do we have that?
It's in the Thompson Engineering Report.
I like what you said.
I would say, you know, the, the situation with the Triangle and the K-1 Center is real similar. That there's a lot of people with a lot of ideas. We can't do it all. We can't, we don't have to just limit it to one thing. The citizens certainly need to have an opportunity to have their input. And we don't have to rush into, into making a decision. But it is very important to get it right. So the conservation easement, if we're going to go that route for one or both parcels, you just got to know in advance what you want to allow. Because once you commit to that, you're committed. So we've got to make sure we go through the proper channels and really think that through. Just a question, is, you know, this, we obtained this land as part of the settlement, you know, with the Dyess family. Do they have any retention of any rights that they've got to sign off on what's being done there? I mean, do we have free rein to do whatever we want? Or is there still some kind of caveat that we got to run something by the Dyess?
I had heard that maybe there was some naming rights, if we had a naming of anything there. I may have heard that. But as far as the rest of that goes, I don't, I don't think so.
Matt can give us an update on that?
I don't think so.
I just think that you put a conservation on something before you go out into the community and start talking about all of the ideas that they have. I just don't understand why you would want to do that. It's a council, you know, that you are the ones that are going to be voting on this. So nothing's going to happen before that. I just don't understand why.
I don't think you would put a conservation easement on it prior to knowing how you're going to lay it out.
Well, that's what, I mean-
We're discussing conservation easement. I think in the discussion, I mean, I'm saying we've got to know how we're going to lay it out or what we're, what we're at least willing to have on there before we enter into one.
You don't have to lay it out, but you can-
You have to, you have to-
Describe what you plan on using that.
Earmark that we're willing to let this, this, and this on the property.
But don't you want to have citizen engagement on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that process is not going to happen. I mean, we're going to have that paid for as a part of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Or we could accelerate it and have the hearing as soon as we're ready. I want to, I guess, when to move this forward in the conversation. Do y'all want to put something together soon to have a, a meeting about uses for that?
I'd like to.
I think that's the, I think that's why it was put on the agenda, right?
To have a community engagement meeting?
Well, to be, to be brought up as to whether or not we want to have a community engagement meeting and where we stand and what's the next step.
I don't, I don't see any issue with, you know, just getting out, and kind of the same thing that we're doing on April 3rd, just kind of hearing ideas of what's, what are the ideas of, of, I mean, for the community in that piece of property. I don't, I don't think there's any harm in getting that ball rolling.
But do you want to do that outside of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that's already paid for?
I don't have any problem doing it outside the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And I don't know when it's going to be completed and not, I don't know. Call me arrogant, but I don't think anybody has a problem with a conservation easement there. And I just think they need to narrow it down a little bit as to what the uses are. I just, I mean, I just haven't had anybody have a problem with it. And I, I mean, we've said it publicly, we've said it publicly in here numerous times. And I've just never had a negative comment about it. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe, maybe the negative comments aren't getting to me. I don't know. Kevin, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to get it, get it going. Been a kind of proponent for this when it was first brought up. And, you know, it would be nice to have the public talking about what their ideas were and put something together with that.
I mean, again, this is another thing, that there's no rush in finalizing it. But I mean, why not start listening to what people have to say about it? I don't know why, I don't know why a land use, whether it's a land use study or not, would affect whether or not we can have some sort of community engagement and hear what people's ideas are off that property.
And it shouldn't cost us anything.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why one would trump the other.
If you want to do the community engagement like we've done in the past, it might not cost you anything to do it. But we're trying to do this in a professional way that, like I said, that everybody has, has input. And if you'll go to the meeting, I think on April 3rd, you'll get a sense of how we want to do these.
I'm pretty certain, and I can come up with a meeting that's pretty professional with people that are local. I'm pretty certain I can pull that off.
I'm just saying, these are, I mean, they're, they're just neutral facilitators.
We will, I believe that we can be, be neutral. Despite what's been done in the past. I don't know exactly what you're referring to, but-
The land use, I mean, the Comprehensive Plan that was done last is a perfect example of an archaic way of doing something where you have maybe 100 people having input. Not even really 100 people, just the people that were able to talk during those sessions, which is really a handful of people.
Any other comments, Council?
Did you go to those meetings?
I was like 13 years old when they did it.
I'm just saying.
I was there.
I'm telling you, I was there at all four.
Civic Center was full.
And-
Civic Center was full.
That was the, that was the final one when they said, this is what we've come up with. And those, those options, nobody discussed at any of the four meetings. So.
I mean, what I'm saying, I mean, this is, I mean, what I'm suggesting, when I say some sort of community engagement, is packing the Civic Center and, and letting people throw around the ideas that they have so that we and as a council and the mayor can just hear what all ideas exist out there. I mean, I don't know, I don't know why it would matter who is standing there saying, yes, sir. What, what is your idea? You know?
You're standing in a room full of people and listening to all of these people.
Yeah.
There's a better way. That's what I'm trying to explain.
I mean, I'm not saying there's not. But I mean, I don't, I don't know why whoever's standing at the front makes that big of a difference if it's the community that's proposing the idea.
All right. Robert, I'll get with you and, and come up with some potential dates and some potential formats. All right. Signed on this discussion, Mr. Reeves, please come up here, if you will.
If you will, hold it.
And whomever.
Thank you all for listening to us today.
You listened to us today.
I'm here on behalf of the Realtors, Volokhane Realtors. And, you know, we had- I'm here on behalf of the Realtors, Volokai Realtors. And, you know, we had, it's been several months ago whenever there was enforcement put in place, a stronger enforcement put in place with the current sign ordinance, which kind of led us to think that maybe we should have the ordinance actually written the way it's going to be enforced. For years, probably almost maybe decades, that we've had with directional signs being on public right of way, there's been kind of an unwritten rule that's been from 5:00 to Friday.
Well, there was a written rule. We just haven't been enforcing it.
Well, that's the thing. Yes, I mean, in the ordinance, it was opposite of what was happening. So now, I mean, by and by, I talked to several people, I think that Jennifer has as well, and we just, I mean, we want to come to an agreement that makes sense so that people know that when they're doing something, they know if they're going to get in trouble or not. So the changes, we proposed a few changes. I think that I sent an email and someone on the staff wrote some things up, but a few of them had to do with primarily what we're talking about as directional or off-site signs, temporary off-site.
So let me kind of say something, if I might, real quick, Mr. Reeves. So I believe, Terrell, you've spoken to everyone on the council and the mayor. You've talked to everybody, right?
I've been able to talk to everybody. I didn't have a good chance to talk with Robert at first.
Email, right.
We've got an email in place and Kevin.
So what you're going to do is you're going to present some recommended changes to the sign ordinance, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, Council, I know, we would, if you want to hear them all and then go back and discuss them, some of these are fairly simple. I think maybe we hit on a bullet and then kind of have a quick discussion and maybe we can just kind of get a, an agreement as to whether or not we want to make that change. Does that sound like a plan?
It's a good plan.
For how to discuss it now?
Kim might be good to come up, or Wayne, if he's here, because they've been a process of this whole thing.
So obviously, as far as sign ordinance goes, that's a standalone ordinance, so the council approves that, doesn't go to the planning commission or anything else. I will tell you, the one thing that has changed in the past three or four years with sign ordinances, and that's a U.S. Supreme Court case about four years ago, and it deals with content of sign. So we can say a directional sign, a for sale sign. We can't, we cannot recognize a sign that has a certain content. It's basically a sign. So if we allow signs in the right of way, if it can be a for sale sign, it could be a yard sale sign, it could be anything like that, we would have to recognize all those signs.
But, but I'll say this too, and I hear you and thank you for that, but for the sake of this conversation, for what they're trying to accomplish likely with directional signs, if somebody's putting a sign that says blueberries for sale and they need to get to that house, they're not going to find that house. So it's going to probably be, pretty certain that they're going to be putting a directional sign there, right?
And I understand, I understand completely what you're saying. That's why part of this, as we go through the list, part of it is really important, I think, that what you're saying will have effect of it. But you guys want to just kind of start at the beginning and then just make notes on where, stop where you, if you want me to stop. We have here, I can't remember if this was in the original or not, but real estate signs, for sale signs to be removed from the property within five days of sale closing. Directional signs are allowed on city right of way with these limitations.
Now, are you, are you, Terrell, I may stop you a lot. So this, that very first sentence, are you suggesting a change to that?
Directional signs are allowed to the city right of way with these limitations.
No, only five days after closing?
Fine with it.
Okay, no change?
No change on that. I'm fine with that. The limitations is that the, number one, the signs may be placed within, and here could be a negotiation point of, it's a quarter mile is what was suggested of the home, which works a lot if you think about Fairhope as just being the downtown area of Fairhope. But if you do get out a little further in the more rural areas of Fairhope, in some cases, that might not be logistically appropriate. You know, there may be a road that's a half mile long, you know, and there's no intersections, you know, in certain cases, in which case, you know, we may want to adjust that to a little bit longer distance.
Or do you even need a distance on it? Because you're limited. And I mean, I think if you're using common sense of where you're putting your directional signs, you put your directional sign so far away from the home for sale, there may be another home for sale. And I was saying, so it's almost self-regulating.
Two, two signs per house.
Two signs per house.
That's the thing. If we go down, down the list, so the next thing, the limiting to the number, I think, is what's going to keep people, or allow people to make sense, not put out 25 signs all over town just because they're having one open house somewhere.
And it allow, right now, the ordinance allows one, and you're...
The ordinance right now doesn't allow any on city right of way ever. So my, my goal is to have limitations within time frames and, yes, put limitations, but allow us to do it.
All right. Let's talk about that then, Council. What thoughts on that?
So in here, you're saying to be put on city right of way excluding the flower bed, right?
Yeah, yeah, will not be enough part, absolutely. That needs to be strongly worded.
As an email, I don't have the actual, all I've got is an email. I don't have the actual ordinance.
Yeah. I would even say, excluding flower beds, beautification areas.
I would too.
You know, make it a little bit tougher.
And just so you guys know, that we are after the same thing here. We, the reason I sell real estate in Fairhope is because how beautiful it is, and we don't want to ruin that. So we're just trying to come to a compromise if I can be happy with it.
So does anybody have a problem with the two, Jay?
That makes sense.
Two directional signs?
Two's good. So what do you...
We have, we have one vote over here. I don't have a problem with two. But what about the distance requirement?
I don't think you need that. It's two signs.
Yeah, and then also enforcement is, is that, you know, enforcement, that's pretty tough too. Is that 1,360 feet or is it 1,361, you know?
Good point. How do you measure that? Straight line? You measure a street, down the street?
I think it's a, I think it's a self, I think it's a self-regulating.
The, the limiting the numbers makes it self-regulating. It doesn't make good business sense to put it elsewhere. So, cool.
I'm seeing nods on that.
Be good with that. So basically, the two signs, the next thing we're talking about is timing of the signs. It's been proposed, and what, what had happened in the past, unwritten or written, I'm not sure, but our signs to get taken up, if they were put out after 5:00 on Friday and taken in by 5:00 on Sunday, which takes care of most of the open houses, and I think probably most garage sales and other kind of weekend activities. However, it doesn't really, you know, if someone wanted to do something during the week, it doesn't allow for that. So the other option could possibly be having an X number of hours on front and back end of the event.
That'd be hard for Kim to police something like that, I think, wouldn't it?
Would.
It is. And in the past, it's not that it hasn't been enforced, it's just that it wasn't enforced on the weekends very often. Every now and then we would come in on the weekends, and it was always put out at your own risk because we could be coming in this weekend to pull, so.
Exactly.
We're, we're doing a lot more enforcement on the weekends now.
But to that end, I mean, just in case somebody did want to have an open house during the week, according to this, they can't put any signs out. So if you, if you make it a time, yeah, it's hard to enforce, but they don't enforce so much on the weekends now anyway. So it's almost a moot point there too, so.
Well, I don't know. I just feel like, I mean, if she's got a, sees a sign that looks out of place and she's going to go track down and figure out, well, what's the, what's the schedule for this actual event?
I get it.
I mean, if you have 30 of those going on a weekend, that's just hard.
Impossible. And being the devil's advocate, the other groups that are wanting to, there's a lot of other good groups that were, you know, charity events that might want to do the same thing, and that's, that's what I'm going to hear is, why can't I do it for my barbecue for the Rotary Club or?
Well, back to Wayne's point.
That's my concern.
You can't limit it to that.
Yeah, it's signs, not content.
I think it's all or none, is my personal feeling.
That's my concern. If you go to Town of Gilbert, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, which is the Supreme Court case, it was about basically temporary signs and directional signs. That's, that's what the case was about. So, and we will, we will carry out whatever the council wants us to carry out. We will certainly do that. I would encourage maybe have legal counsel review that just to make sure we're not running afoul somewhere, but we want to follow whatever the council...
Wayne, Kim, what do y'all thought, what are your thoughts on that?
I guess my, I mean, I understand where they're coming from, and we want them to continue to sell real estate and have a good business. My concern is, is that if we're not careful, we're going to have a cluttered right of way. And that can sometimes, if we're not careful, it can make the city not as beautiful as we want it to be. That's my only concern would be that. But again, this, it's a paw decision of the council. We respect that. But my only, my only concern would be just the cluttering of the right of way.
So any thoughts on that, on that time, you know, weekends, Friday to Sunday, any thoughts on that?
You know, I think, I think if we can limit it, that's always a good thing for us.
It's when you want the prettiest, right?
That's, yeah, that's true. That's the next time it was. That's when we want, that's when most people are in town.
Exactly. That's another, that's a catch 22. You allow it in the weekend, which is when everybody's in town.
And in Fairhope, what's not a beautification area? How do you define that?
Well, that's, that's another, that's a big topic, is the beautification area. So I mean, for us, I mean, we want to work as best we can with, and I understand it's not just us, it's also, you know, the barbecue, the steak cookoff and everything else has to follow the same rules. And we just want to make sure that, you know, we work with you guys and get it on paper so we know what we're breaking or not breaking.
You want clear directional information.
I definitely think...
Better directional information.
Yeah, directional signs, exactly.
Terrell, you had mentioned the, the temporary sign thing, and that, that's never interpreted as being towards Realtor signs. That's never...
I was, yeah, I was like, whoa.
Well, it specifies on Realtor, talks about Realtor signs, that it's for, there's special provisions for Realtor signs.
That's another area that I just mentioned, but you just cleared that up. It has something to do with temporary signs not being able to be placed on a property, private property for more than 30 days, but you just explained this, not for sale signs. I wish I could sell them all in two weeks. I mean, that'd be great.
Does that honestly need to be, does it specifically state that's not inclusive of for sale signs or?
It specifically has a clause just for real estate signs, and it says specifically...
And Councilman, I will tell you that our current sign ordinance is not compliant with that Supreme Court case either, as is probably every sign ordinance in the county. It probably is not compliant with that, because we, we go into different kinds of signs, which, I'm not a lawyer, but when I read that and what I've been taught in some of our classes and seminars, that's, that's a problem.
So I understand what you're saying. So, and to me, that Supreme Court case, it'd have to be that, that nobody could limit signs.
Mm-hmm. That, and, yeah, that was the concern as far as that case goes. It kind of opened the doors to a lot of different things, made it very hard to regulate it.
I didn't see, the time requirement, there's not a...
It does, just says until the closing of the house or...
What's that?
On the, on the real estate side.
Well, five, five days after closing.
Yeah.
I think from our perspective, I don't, I don't think we're that concerned about what goes on on the private property. I think, at least speaking myself, on the right of way is our, is my only hesitation that I have as far as that goes. No, exactly. And we, again, you know, we're very sensitive. I mean, I'm a, I've got my life built here in Fairhope, so I'm very sensitive to the beautification and keeping everything nice. And quite frankly, property values will drop if we let everything go. So, you know, but on the other hand, if we're severely limited in being able to sell your house, that, that doesn't help us with property values either.
And how, how important are the directional signs in this day where people can put in a GPS and go right to it?
Well, it's important as far as sales go, in my opinion, and you, Terrell, well, and but for me, open houses are a different story. We get a lot of people roaming around, especially in this town, driving around on Sundays, just looking for signs. So I think they're extremely important for open houses on the weekend. You know, and even if someone does find an open house online, which we do advertise, of course, in the, in the board's website, catching the eye of another sign in that neighborhood, you know, sends the mayor as well. So it's, it's very important.
Council, y'all got comments on that time again? We kind of, we didn't really resolve that.
I think the proposal is just from 5:00 p.m. Friday to 5:00 p.m. Sunday. I think that makes...
Anything before that called out? Anything after it gets pulled up?
Yeah, I think so. And I think that, I think what really got people's attention on this is when they started popping up in flower beds. I don't think you didn't have them in the, in the flower bed, it wouldn't stand out as much, and I agree with Terrell.
Well, how do you, and then, you know, back to, it is a great question. How do you define beautification area? I hear you on that. I mean, and you know, the long story is, it'd be up to your judgment, and if you write them a ticket, then they go before a judge, and the judge has to determine if it was. But then, you know, you could call just mowed grass a beautification area, or pine strawed area, or, or something perceived that has some wildflowers there. So it is, you know, if we say flower beds...
That's a little more specific.
Do we define that? Do we define that? Or do we, or do we need to expand on that? Because there probably are, and I can't say that I can define it right now, but I'm sure there's some other areas that aren't flower beds, that if we saw signs, we'd say, uh-uh, that shouldn't be there. So how do you define that?
And if you start excluding a lot of places, then the signs start getting congregated in one place that's not excluded, and then you have another issue. We got more signs there. But we can, we could put some thought to that, trying to define what areas we should not put them in and try to bring something back to the...
That'd be great.
Okay. And we, we can certainly put our heads together.
And the person that you're putting the sign in front of, how do we...
And keep in mind, when you're talking about enforcement, to Jay's point, we understand that some of this has got to be a deterrent. I hate that everybody's watching me say this, because it's, some of it's got to be a deterrent, and you could ticket them, but not all of it's going to be easy to, to police.
And Councilman, we don't...
It may be nearly impossible in some cases.
We don't like ticketing people. We don't, that's not our primary concern. We like, we'd like to gain compliance through education, because that's, that's the last thing we want to do is ticket people and take them to court, because that just takes a lot of time, and it's not a good way to do it. We'd much rather educate and try to have compliance that way. And that's one thing. I know that Realtors are the primary sign people, you know, and you have full buy-in from the, from the board here, Board of Realtors, that we will help facilitate and educate, you know, all of our members with regard to what the ordinance is. Because quite frankly, with me and my, my agents, the ones that I'm over, I, I just don't want them doing anything that's not clearly legal.
So what I'm saying, so we kind of got sidetracked on that detail. What else do we have? What other bits were there?
The thing, again, that's not in there has to do with the flower beds, and I feel very strongly that that needs to be specified in some way. Maybe even if you just said, I mean, flower beds, you can pretty much tell what a flower bed is. But beautification areas, that could be, you know, yeah.
Designated, yeah, beautification city areas. Yeah, a map online.
You could say things like, you know, islands and things like that.
Right. Because I, I mean, I don't know about you, Jack, but when that weekend that blew up, I did, I counted on the corner in the flower bed at Fairhope Avenue and Greeno Road, probably eight signs in the flower bed. So I completely get it. I didn't like it when I saw it. I'm in the business. So, you know, we're all on the same page with that. Now, here's something that popped up that I don't know how logistically it would work. But, but if it were, if it were felt to be necessary, you know, the Realtors would even, you know, be willing to look at if you guys had a standard type of sign. You know, I understand the pros and cons of that, because again, I do believe with the federal law, that would have to be, if it was a specific type of Fairhope sign, that would also have to be for garage sales, it'd have to be for barbecues. You know, if the Rotary Club, they couldn't use their logo, they'd have to use just, you know, basically standard signs. So I don't know if that makes sense or not. But again, we are willing to work with you guys on whatever helps keep the city looking better.
Are the signs' size consistent from Realtor to Realtor, from agency to agency?
Pretty much. But I do know one here, I read somewhere where we had a two-foot square foot.
No, sign, yeah.
Some arrow, some rectangle.
I think it would be laborious on the part of the city to, to have to provide them, and laborious on the part of the Realtor to try to change inventory and make it consistent. And I do have an example in our neighborhood, when you put a sign, a house up for sale, you have to conform. Everybody's sign has to look the same. And we're small neighborhoods, so it's not that hard. And it's, it's a covenant, not a city law, so we, you know, can police our own. But it's still work. I mean, it's, it's, and I could just imagine if we had to get everybody to have a uniform sign within the city, I don't know how much, I don't know how...
I don't think we want to be in the sign business.
I don't know that we want to be in that sign business either. But, you know, in all fairness, he brought it up.
Right.
Generous offer on y'all's...
I mean, and we'd work with you as best we could with it, but in honesty and looking at what it would take to enforce or even get that going, not only just for, you know, for the Realtors, we have a fairly good handle on that, but for everybody. I know for, for a fact, the Rotary wants to use their signs. They look good, you know, for their steak cookoffs and things like that.
And if they're all uniform and, and somebody puts one up in a flower bed, you're never going to know where it came from.
That's a good point. I have thought about making sure we put our names on them because of the theft of signs.
Yeah, when we met, I was saying that, you know, you put your information on the back.
You might want to put your...
Because you would want to keep them.
Chip them.
I mean, when you take them up.
You might chip them, Terrell. GPS reader to their house. But, I mean, as far as that part goes, obviously, most Realtors would rather not have that because it is an additional expense and something you got to make sure you have, the city of Fairhope signs, if you have an open house this weekend for the house you just put up on the market. I get it. But I just said that it was, I think it was brought up in a meeting, Karen, with you, and, and we're willing to work with you guys best we can on it.
But, you know, to that, to that point made me think of something, and I don't think it'd be a big expense at all. Wayne, would, is it legal to require someone to put, you Wayne, would, is it legal to require someone to put, you know, like a political sign, it has to say, paid political advertising by there, it could, in fine print, could it be required that they put, you know?
But here's the thing, Jack, think about the one off garage sale.
A sticker you could put on there.
Not being a lawyer, I could buy the garage sale.
Well, true, but the garage sale's going to have a phone number and address on there, probably, right?
But they'd have to, but everybody'd have to have, I mean, that's what I'm saying, with the whole idea, you got to treat everybody equally, so, a lot of detail.
If every house in Fairhope looked alike, like an Alice Beach or Rosemary Beach, then I would get it, but Fairhope's very unique. I mean, every building downtown looks different. I don't see the point of why we would have completely uniform signs and want to get in.
I think it was because...
Somebody identifying it as a sign.
When you have a bunch of different signs, it's, it gets trashy-looking.
You have to put it on the chip plate.
Most of them have the name, but it's still required.
But, to my point, I think if we are able to limit the number of signs, that would go a long way toward the clutter issue. And that's what, I mean, here, if we stick with two per house, you know, within a certain, actually, two per house is probably going to be the biggest thing that makes everything look better. And quite frankly, even after you guys kind of, you know, put the hammer down on the ordinance a few months ago, it's gotten a lot better. There's still people who just say, oh, the heck with it, I'm going to do it anyway. But, you know, for the most part, it has helped a lot. And we will push this out, whatever you guys come up with, it will be pushed out, and every realtor, working realtor that has a licenser, is a member of the Baldwin County Association of Realtors, will know about it.
And educate new members on a monthly basis. That's the biggest thing, because we have so many new people coming into our industry, and them not knowing the rules. They may have been in the business for 15-plus years, but as they're new, they don't know the way.
What else?
With regard to that, let's see, I wrote some other things down here at the bottom. The one had to do with some sort of language being put in there, we talked about that with beautification. Again, you've got the buy-in from all of the Realtor Board to whatever you guys decide to...
That's really about all I have, it's really not a whole lot to it. I mean, really, it's just the limitation on numbers, signs, the time in which we can do it.
Two, no distance.
It made it simpler.
And leave them out of flower beds, and you're going to come up with maybe a paragraph or less to define that.
Correct, yes, sir.
And that...
Makes it pretty simple, really.
I believe that's where we're at, right?
Yeah, I mean...
Oh, and the time, we left the time the same, right?
Five to five, Friday to five, Sunday.
So you don't have to work on a weekend.
There's got to be a penalty, swing, point to the house.
Was there anything else?
I've got something else to bring this, and I, did I send it to you?
Can you go up to the mic?
You know, I've got some calls, not only about signs out the street, but the windows, the TVs in the windows downtown, you know, and kind of, I think the ordinance is kind of outdated, and the technology is past it, and so it might be something we need to look at, so they kind of update that ordinance to reflect modern technology and say that we're not... I don't know that that was the intent of that rule when it was written, but it's...
That's a whole nother story.
And that's been litigated.
We'll get you on a next work session.
I think everybody knows where my office is and how I would stand on that.
Yeah.
You mean the one with the big TVs, with the houses that rotate through there?
And it...
That would be the one.
...of the city. Yeah, well, I mean, technically, that's the way it's written, but, and that's my point, is I don't know that that's, and that's another issue, is it going to municipal court? Because there's no way, there's no wiggle room there for them to interpret intent. It is, loss is this, that's what it is.
That's a great question, if I have a chance, Council President, if I could address real quick.
Yeah, we had to wrap it up, so we got to get to...
So we have landscape ordinance, street, we have landscape ordinance, tree ordinance, sign ordinance, and a few other things, that the only remedy, these are standalone ordinances, the only remedy for those, for any relief, is to go to municipal court, which is, I think, is a bit of a problem, because even if you want to, even if you had some unique, special circumstance, there is no method to grant relief, like a variance case, for example, without going to municipal court. I understand the intent when it was drafted that way to be, you know, to be very clear and very clear-cut about it, but we have several cases that we've dealt with where I believe if it were me, I would be looking for ways to grant some relief, because it is, you can't meet it.
Are you saying we can't modify the ordinance?
Yes, you can, yes, sir, but the way it's currently written, our only recourse is, anybody's only recourse is to go to municipal court. And I think they have so many cases in municipal court dealing with traffic and things like that, it's not, it's not something they do very often, and I think, I think that we could maybe have a better method of granting relief from that somehow. So my only suggestion is going forward, may want to look at that just from a general standpoint, but it's for signs, landscaping trees, what else?
Eric mentioned that same thing, you know, right.
Yeah, and what it does is, I mean, the municipal judge's hands are tied, he doesn't, he doesn't have the authority in that situation to interpret the spirit of the rule, and whether or not this was supposed to be covered in it, and say, your circumstances are special, whether that came, if that came in front of the council, or the Board of Adjustments, or somebody else, they could interpret it on a case-by-case basis, which I think is probably the most appropriate way to do it.
Right, because now, for example, if it's a zoning variance, the Board of Adjustments is appointed by the council, and they have criteria that they have to follow that's in the ordinance, and they can grant relief based on that criteria for unique circumstances and so forth, they do a good job with that. And I think that's something that we may want to consider, because right now, we're boxed in, very much so.
Don't forget any ordinance that says that Wayne can't leave the city.
Time's ticking down, all these things.
In your contract.
You didn't write the fine print.
But that's just a general, that's not related, it is related to this, but from a larger sense, we are, we have some things I think we could probably improve on.
Jay will get that, work session very soon.
Make Jay the chairman of the Appeals Committee.
I'll be honest with you, whenever that kind of, you know, whenever this all came up, we actually started, we actually read the ordinance, you know, a few months ago, and in it, you know, I think it's maybe this is what you're talking about, but there's threat of jail time for having a sign in the wrong place.
Well, they knew who had the TV. Some of you guys are sketchy.
We're the most business-friendly town, remember that, Harkell?
Yeah, right.
Jay, I have heard some of those same comments, various people.
And I knew this wasn't exactly what we were talking about.
No, no, it's a good time to bring it up, though, it was, yes, sir. Thank you all.
Well, I appreciate your time and anything you got.
Have we kind of addressed everything? I mean, it's only been like a year or so since Jennifer brought this to our attention.
Are we good? And Council President, I'll take responsibility for that, because, but we've been tied up, and we honestly haven't had the chance to really dedicate enough time to this to really kind of clear it up, so that's more my fault.
...of land use plan before we brought it up.
Plus, he's leaving, he don't care.
I do, no, I do care, I do care. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thanks, Terrell.
See you, Terrell. All right.
Thank you for being patient. Everybody might want to check their notes on this.
Hi, don't worry. I apologize, I'm still fighting a touch on my cell.
Okay. If you got that mic on there, pull that to you.
It tends to drip in there. Can you hear me okay?
I can't. While you're talking about this, I know that I'm going to have some questions about maybe Nick Center rates and Civic Center rates as well, they're in here.
They're both in there.
All right, awesome, okay, very good.
And Mr. Barrow, before I begin, if it's okay, Mayor, can I mention that resolution?
Yes.
That we have a little gray, a little gray area that's kind of open to interpretation. Back in, I believe it was October of 2017, there was a resolution passed that said that the golf professional at Quail Creek has the ability to set daily fees, specials, discounts from time to time at the golf course. So things like cart rentals, golf club rentals are things that I would normally set. Now we have the issue of a room rental, the patio, and also the grill, with the new renovations we've done to the patio. By the way, it came out great, thanks to all of you. It looks great.
We'll visit it Friday for sure.
I know, can't wait. So I guess one reason I'm here is to find out, would that fall under daily fees like other rentals? Because my interpretation is, it is a daily fee, it's something we deal with on a daily basis, or will, with a nice patio that we have to rent. Just wanted to get your feelings on that.
I had sent something, I did, I mean, I differ with you, I didn't think that that included rentals of the facilities. I thought it was strictly golf fees, green fees, and not rental fees, because historically, the council has always set the rental fees for the facilities. So I don't think it was, I didn't think it was our intent to allow adjustability of rental fees. I mean, no different than the Civic Center manager has the ability to change the fees for the Civic Center rental as we see fit, or he sees fit, or she sees fit.
Okay.
That's my interpretation, and I thought I had sent an email on that, but maybe I didn't.
And that actually might be a benefit to you, so that you don't have to, you don't have people calling to try to negotiate every rental every time, is that, you know, here's the price. Now, changing green fees and cart fees and those sort of things, that sort of, I guess, can change...
Seasonal based on competition and...
And we had, you know, fire department, police department wants a function at City Hall, we've waived fees like that, for things like that, but Jay, you make a really good point there.
It is a good point, thank you.
Occasionally, I have.
All right, so anyway, go ahead.
Okay, so anyway, with the renovations being nearly complete, except for the windows that will be put in very shortly, I believe we have a product that is unique to the city that people will really like, the view is wonderful. It's an outdoor venue and also an indoor venue, where people can go inside if temperature isn't to their liking, they can go outside as well. And because it is such a unique venue at a golf course, and we've made the renovations, I feel we need to have a rental fee that's reflective of the changes that we've made. And I've done quite a bit of research, looking at the Nick's Ballroom rentals. Nick's Ballroom rents for $4.85 per night, plus $20 per hour, which goes toward covering wages, and $100 cleaning fee. The Quad Room rents for $3.85 per night, and similar extra fees that go with that. I've looked at some other facilities in the area, for example, American Legion charges $600 per day. They're not specific on hours, it could be two hours, it could be five hours, $600 is what the manager told me. And that would, for a typical rental of four hours, which is what they do, that would be about $150 per hour for American Legion. Because we had such a low fee before, $20 per hour, I don't think it's a great idea to go ahead and go exorbitant in fees, but I think something around $75 per hour, $20 per hour to cover wages, and a cleaning fee, which is very typical of what Nick Center does. I've done that as well in the past, and ensures that patrons take good care of the facility and leave it in the shape that they found it in the next day. We've got a very, very small staff, so a cleaning fee would really be something that we'd have to institute.
Jeff, I, you know, we put this resolution together in the event that we walked on tonight, and just looking at the Civic Center, the Civic Center, for instance, if you rent it for the main auditorium from 8:00 to 5:00, which is nine hours, and that doesn't include the lobby hall, is $585. If you rented the Quail Creek Clubhouse for the same amount of time, it would be $845. And I know that you could make the argument that, well, people are typically only going to rent the clubhouse for two to four hours, which is probably a very good argument, but you still, it lends itself to, it's almost, to me, too expensive for the full day, so...
Yeah, Mr. Barrow, based on that, if you don't mind, based on that, you're right, I agree, we're in a homeowner's neighborhood. The only time that we can really rent, because of daily play being so busy there, would really be about 7:00 o'clock to about 10:00 o'clock at night. I think any time past that would be hard as far as noise, with houses being so close to the patio.
Then why don't you consider just a flat rate for a half a day, and if you base that on four hours, that's $300. You could have a half a day or a full day rental, and do a, and it's pretty simple, $300 for a half a day, and you get four hours, they could stay three, but they could have four, or $600 for a full day. And that would be, it's always subject to availability. If you were to say it's not available, then they can't rent the whole day, but...
Yeah, yeah, sure, I mean, it would be...
Slow days, if somebody wanted all day, but I think that way, if you did have the longer event, let's say they wanted a six-hour event, they wouldn't be paying so much money. I think it saves them, I think it saves the customer a little bit of money.
Anybody have any comments on that?
Yeah, I think that's how I would do it, a half-day, full-day rate, just have the two flat fees. Instead of, and the $20 per hour cover staff wages.
And actually, I did that wrong, it should be about, it would be $90, it's $95 an hour, really, when you throw in the per hour to cover staff, so I would just lump that in and make it simple, so it'd be...
I'd still go three and a six, or 250 and five.
Yeah, three, it's 380 for a half a day, and then that'd be, well, that'd be 760 for a full day, but the whole idea was to kind of save them some.
I would just propose the same thing I proposed, and we've had this discussion before for other arenas, is that keep it as simple as you can, so that there's very little burden on the person who's responsible for keeping up with these charges.
I'd say 250 for a half-day, 500 for a full day, and just, I mean, how much money are you leaving on the table? How much?
You're leaving quite a bit if you go 250, I think. That's, that's roughly $60 an hour for four hours.
Well, we're assuming that you're going to have a lot line of people that are going to want to rent this for above, you know, that, above the four-hour rate. I mean, if you're only going to need it for one or two hours, you're going to turn people away if they got to pay higher prices.
But you got to assume they might want it for four hours, though, and then you're losing, I'd rather us benefit than get behind, because you're still paying that staff if they have the four-hour rental.
Right, sure.
And they may demand, oh, I've paid for four hours, I want four hours, so I'd suggest maybe, maybe, maybe like a 350, 350's a good round number, and you get a little break, maybe like 7 or 650 for a full day, you have a price break.
And that would put you more in line with American Legion, plus our atmosphere is really great, I mean, I think it's unique for what we're presenting.
Yeah, how would that apply, depending on how many people in the city they need to be there? Because right now, it's 75 an hour plus 20 an hour per wages, I'm assuming that's per employee that's got to be there.
Typically, one to two people can cover it.
Right, well, one or two.
Well, the way it's covered, it says $20 per hour to cover staff wages, so I call it a...
Twenty per person per hour.
It didn't say 20 per person?
No.
Per hour?
And usually, one person could cover it, so...
Now, a cleanup fee at $50 per hour could be a little bit nebulous as well, and another one, you had a $100 cleanup fee.
Yeah, what I proposed was a $100 cleanup fee, and I think the $50 fee came back as if somebody didn't satisfy their obligation to clean, then they would be billed at $50 per hour for us to clean up what they did not do.
I agree with that.
Which is typical.
Yeah, see, I kind of missed that line, there you go. Counsel, I was going to propose, I would have proposed 350 a half-day, 650 for a full day, $100 cleaning fee and $50 per hour if additional cleaning's required.
Can I get a drink on that, by chance? I like 345, but 350...
What was the other, that six, what? 650, is 350 or 650?
Sounds like a deal, Robert.
Now, since you had it per hour, I'm just asking this question, I don't, is it normally
Is it normally rented for four, you know, half-day, five-hour period? Or is there not more two-hour, three-hour rentals?
Typically, the few rentals we've had so far have been for about a two-hour period in the evening, usually six to eight, seven to nine.
So under this proposal, it would fall under the $3.50.
The half-day.
Do we need to... Does it... Would it be a problem if you don't specify what a half a day has to be? Does it have to be eight to 12? And are... Can they specify what they want it to be? I think we might want to say...
Why don't you put a maximum on it, you know? I mean, up to four.
Up to four hours.
Up to four.
I think you ought to say up to four hours, and then for the other, up to eight hours.
Yeah, that's it. I mean, they're 30 minutes they pay.
And then you could police that by saying, "Well, it's not available those hours."
Yeah, certainly, right.
Yeah, if somebody wanted 10 to two, you know...
Sure, sure, exactly.
And then another reason you charge a whole amount is because they're taking it off the market for, you know, a certain time.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. I mean, if somebody rents during the day, then whatever events we have going on for golf have to be rerouted outside.
Right.
So...
So $3.50 for half a day. Half-day defined as up to four hours. $6.50 for a full day. A full day defined up to eight hours.
I'd find that reasonable.
All right. We... I think that we can... Y'all want to put that on tonight's agenda?
I do not.
Okay. We'll get on the next one.
Yeah, that's okay.
All it takes is one person to say no and no.
That's okay.
It's not an ordinance, Jay.
Actually, I can...
It's not an ordinance.
It's a change in...
Not that I want to do this.
Possibly you should be voted on that.
Yeah, I do give the people a chance to take a look at this. See if there's any complaints about it.
Okay. Well, we don't... Well, the only point is, I'm saying, make it... We don't introduce it as an ordinance. So it's not introduced and laying over. So it just won't even be talked about in any way.
Yeah, correct.
And I have no pending rentals tonight, so we're okay.
Okay. Are you losing any business in the next two weeks by not having this set?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right, cool. We'll wait there.
What type of effective date do you want on?
Kind of what?
Effective date.
Effective as soon as the mayor signs or either... Or I sign the resolution. It'd be the next application, right?
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. Real quick, Jimmy, any committee updates?
No, sir, none for me.
Robert?
No updates.
Kevin?
No updates.
Jay?
We've got... I need to get on the next meeting. We've got a new appointment to the Recreation Board.
Okay.
Great addition.
I don't have any. Department heads, Mr. Johnson.
Just kind of one thing is a kind of a micro-thought on your first discussion item. My horticulturist is asking every day, "When are we taking possession of the K-1 Center?" Because we're assuming that is at the minute that we close that Ballin County Board of Education is no longer going to come show and mow it and maintain it. So as much heads up as we can have. And then really, something for Mayor and y'all to discuss and think about. What is the expected level of maintenance in this interim time until some plan goes forward? There's a lot of erosion on the west side of that building. There's a lot of bushes that are kind of overgrown. There's trees that need being maintained. And you kind of know us. If you tell us, "Take care of it," we'll take care of it. But we need to kind of plan for that, you know, just at least in the interim until some final plan is going forward.
The best that I can tell you right now is that closing is imminent. Now, does that mean two weeks, three weeks, four weeks? Somewhere in that.
Very good. We'll start planning for it, and it's going to be mowing season. So, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Good evening, War Eagle. We're working with the county, trying to do some relocation work on the Pole Cat Creek bridge crossing they're working on. And I just want to ask if there's any questions anybody has about the resolution that could potentially be walked on to cover those costs, to be reimbursed for them.
Do we have that? I don't... Have we been... I don't know anything about it. You might know anything about this? I don't know anything about it.
First of all, don't you give us a little?
It's about 9,000 miles worth of work. There's two water services, and there's a six-inch line that goes down. I think it's Woodhaven Drive. And it's become apparent that it's a problem for the construction. So we... They were getting prices from the general contractor with a subcontractor out of Mississippi that the cost became pretty expensive in the time and wasn't exactly meeting the schedule the county wanted. So they reached out to us, and we gave them some prices, and...
And 100% reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. This is for water? This is for water supply?
Yes, yes, yes. And it's just 100% reimbursable based on the agreement that...
Jay, it's not fees.
It's 100% reimbursable. I'm good with it.
Anyway, if y'all have any que... I didn't know you weren't aware of it, but if you...
Well, Lisa probably told me, and I can't...
If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Or if you have any questions about anything else, I'll try to answer them.
If you have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, attorney. Jay?
We just covered it.
Tom, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right.
Just a couple of things. I'm not sure if y'all heard, our ball machine was involved in a little bit of an incident. Came off the trailer. And Lisa has the information. We're submitting it as an insurance claim.
Yes.
So hopefully, we'll have that back within a week or two once we hear back from the insurance company.
The ball machine came off a trailer?
Yeah, it was... They were loading it on the trailer, and it came off. So it's had some issues where it won't go straight. There's a valve in it that was sticking, and it had been corrected before. And we're not sure if that's what happened this time or if it was an inexperienced person. We're still investigating that. But the result was, it came off the trailer and rolled.
Anybody hurt?
Nobody got hurt. No, it's the machine. It's a... You walk behind it, you don't on it. So it was about $15,000. So... And then the second item I have is the Gen item 11. I didn't know if y'all had any questions on that one to rebid on our poll inspections. There was some confusion.
Do you want to reject them?
Yes, sir. And then we'll go off a bit again. There was some confusion on the tab sheet. If you look to the bottom of the sheet, you can see where one person had about $600, the other bidder had about $24,000 for the same item. So that tells me that there was some confusion. So I just wanted to kind of go back. We're going back to a solid, one-line cost to do the work for up to 4,000 polls. And they were apples to apples. So...
I guess, who made the mistake?
There was some confusion. We're not exactly sure how many polls we have. So that lead led to... We sent maps out with what we have from our GIS system. And that doesn't have all the polls on them. And then one person made an assumption about how many subtransmission polls we have. The other person kind of just went, "Oh, 4,000 minus the number that's on these other pages." So just led to a little bit of confusion there.
I guess I'd ask the city attorney. You know, I want to take a look at this, Marcus, so we don't get into some kind of legal challenge to this. If somebody won the bid and they don't get it based on somebody not quite understanding something, somebody might say, "Hey, you know, that's not my problem. You didn't understand what you were bidding on. I don't know who won."
Right.
But...
It just wasn't an apples...
To make sure that we're not going to get into some kind of situation.
It just wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison on the tab sheet this way because of the confusion.
Once again, I think that we should look at that just a little bit. And I guess we have to vote on it tonight if we want to reject them.
So...
Richard?
Just remember, our bid language consistently says that you reserve the right to reject any bids for any reason. So there is a protection built in our contract documents for that.
We haven't signed a contract yet, either.
No. 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 I just want to make sure we're getting an apples-to-apples comparison on the bids.
Sure. That's a good point. I just don't want us to get into the lawsuit over...
I understand.
Awarding or rejecting a bid and giving somebody a second chance when they should have known the first time how to...
And we're going back to all, not just the people that actually bid on and all the people that it was sent to the first time.